Yes, that I needed to run for county commissioner. And the commissioners will be responsible for our recovery and resiliency going forward to make sure that we have a better plan next time. Because unfortunately, these these climate disasters are going to keep happening. So we need to be better prepared, and I have learned so many lessons through this experience about what we can do to make sure every person in Boulder County has a better chance next time. To make sure that we don't commit the same mistakes again and that we do better. But the really great thing is my experience in leadership has really well prepared me for this job. I've been working on transportation issues here in Boulder County since 2014 on the Denver Regional Council of Governments. I just finished my term there as chair, where we've been working on Vision Zero, multimodal solutions, and other ways to get more funding into our county. I'm committed to working on homelessness and housing issues. Just walk down the street and you will see that our unhoused population is not being served like we need to right now. And I'm dedicated to addressing the issues, whether they be drug related, mental health related, or otherwise, there are lots of reasons people become unhoused. We've got to work harder to make sure we're meeting people where they are and providing solutions. And last, taking climate action. This is the challenge of our generation. We have got to step up. We are behind the curve and we have to reduce our carbon emissions. Climate disasters, other impacts of climate devastation are going to continue to hit us and we need to do more. We're Boulder County. We have to take the leadership role in this area and reduce our emissions. That means capping wells. That means all electrification. That means using our sustainability tax in ways we have yet to unleash so that we can really truly have a big impact and lead the way. On getting where we need to be, so that we don't increase our temperatures as much as they're projected to go right now. So I am committed to serving the community. I'm the prepared candidate that has the experience to hit the ground running on day one, and I hope I can count on everyone's support.
Thank you so much, Ashley. Elena, would you like to go?
I would. Thank you. And I hope everyone forgives me. I have a bit of a cough. But my name is Elena Shively. I'm so excited to be here. I'm really grateful for all of your enthusiasm and engagement. I'm a lifetime resident of Boulder County. I grew up at the top of Sugarloaf Mountain and was no stranger as a child to fire danger and other environmental disasters. That continued to get worse with our climate emergency. My husband Lane is a nurse at Boulder Community Hospital. He was also born and raised here in Boulder County. We now live in Lafayette and we are raising two girls who are five and nine and two black labs Buck and Bodie. I currently work for the Boulder County District Attorney's Office, where I've been for the last eight years. I've implemented sustainable and effective criminal justice reform. I work on equity and behavioral health programs. And launched the first in the state mental health diversion program. I've worked on our co-responder programs and implemented restorative justice in our system. Prior to joining the DA's office as a public defender. I've always fought for equity in those whose voices aren't always heard or are purposely excluded. I've fought for immigrants, those who've made a mistake and need another chance. I fight for crime victims. Those struggling with mental health or substance use disorders. Those who are on the brink of homelessness or are unhoused. For people of color who are experiencing racism here. And for working, or excuse me, and lifting LGBTQ voices. Community safety should mean all of our county should feel safe in their homes and in the community. It's prevention, it's increased access to behavioral health services, it's supporting workers' rights, health equity, housing access. Childhood educate, early childhood education. And gun violence prevention measures. My husband as a nurse and me at the district attorney's office with my dog Buck, who's a service dog that does community engagement and disaster response. We have been on the front lines of the pandemic, the Kink Super shooting, and the Marshall Fire and the fires since then. I will continue. Excuse me. I will continue this work to address our immediate needs, long-term resilience and recovery. Modernized disaster notification. I was on the ground at Office of Emergency Management at many of these fires. And I also was at the Disaster Assistance Center for over three weeks, working with families who've lost their homes. We need to invest in social infrastructure to better prepare us for the future and decrease these future events and the disasters. Will keep coming, as many planets say. Disaster response, recovery, and resilience should be reasonable, regional, and collaborative, and not political. We do need to protect our environment in big and small ways. And the climate action is an emergency. I worry about every single day as a mom of two young girls. I'm frustrated that we haven't been able to achieve more to improve things like safe biking, infrastructure, accessible housing. This race isn't about me or my career goals. It's about the levers to continue to do the work I care about for this community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Elena. I want to also say that I've been in Colorado for six months and I'm having some allergy issues. And so if I cough, I apologize. But I'm told it will get better the longer I'm here. We are very lucky to have two such awesome and impressive candidates. And so thank you for running and thank you for taking the time to answer some questions today. The first question Elena is going to answer first, and then Ashley will go. And it is just simply, what does a county commissioner do?
Really glad you're asking that question. County commissioner is often in office that people don't know what they do and it often gets skipped on ballots. So I'm going to shamelessly plug that you all vote for this line item on your ballots because it's incredibly important. The county commissioners oversee basically the business of the county. And so in 2021, the county commissioners passed a budget of about $550 million. And the county commissioners will also be deciding and implementing how to use funds, such as the Recovery Act funds, or the opioid settlement funds that the county gets. And so it's a mixture. It's a quasi judicial, quasi legislative function. But they are overseeing the branches of government that do the county's business. So housing and human services, public health. The jail, the sheriff's office, the district attorney's office budget, community services. All of those agencies report to commissioners. And the county commissioners also serve as the housing authority for Boulder County. One of the biggest pieces is also disasters. And so Office of Emergency Management. We're responding to all of that and as Ashley said, overseeing recovery aspects as well. One last piece, and then I'll turn it over, Bruce, is pieces to think about. Health and wellness, public safety, and then open space and land management. All the counties' open space and land is managed and is management. Sometimes they butt up against city land as well. But how to manage and how to use that land, be it for agricultural, regenerative agricultural purposes, preserving conservation, trail management, that all comes. All under the commissioners as well.
Thank you, Elena. Ashley?
Thank you very much for the question. So then I usually break it into three or four categories. The day-to-day management and administration of the county is a critical pivotal role, making sure that there's adequate leadership and policy direction for staff to be able to carry out the critical function. So this is everything from when you're in line at the DMV. You know, are the staff motivated and inspired and well taken care of and supported through ensuring that, you know, there are reasonable wages and benefits? And really good work environment for the staff. So there is a leadership role to be played there, ensuring that the staff have a very good work-life balance. The budget adoption is obviously critical. That's where a lot of people see what the county commissioners are doing. This is where you're saying, what are our priorities as a county? What are the community's priorities? Are we making sure we're giving out Boulder County enough resources? To do the great work about Boulder County? What about the other? There are nonprofits really carrying out great work. And the county is responsible for sending the money to where it's most needed. And then people really see that. Are people being taken care of? Are the unhoused being taken care of? Are the streets in good condition? Are the bike lanes in good condition? Do we have connector paths? Are we budgeting for capital in the right way? So the budget really is what touches everyone in their day-to-day life, whether they know it or not. So the budget adoption and policy setting through that is a critical piece. Next is the land use decision piece. This is something at the local level we're really familiar with because city councils often do land use and budgeting as well. In the land use area, this is really about taking what the county's regulatory framework is and applying it in decisions. But there's always a question of how you interpret the law, right? And so reading, reading the law and ensuring that the spirit and intent of what the community wants is carried out on those decisions. Is critical. And that that means protecting the community from things like oil and gas wells and things that are abnormalities that are really dangerous for community members. And then last, the great facilitation role that the county can play. County commissioners are the only full-time elected officials in, as far as like legislative bodies. You have, you know, other county officials that are. The Boulder mayor, the Louisville mayor, the Longmont mayor, not full-time jobs. There's a full-time city manager carrying out that job. And the county commissioners can really help all of the other local electeds by facilitating discussion. This makes, makes things like passing a regional minimum wage possible. This makes taking collective action on gun violence prevention possible. So this great facilitator role is not a written responsibility in the Colorado revised statutes, but it's a critical pivotal role that the county commissioners play. And just last, you know, between my management experience in chemical engineering, running a three-shift operation and scaling up facility. To other countries and budget adoption, both from the private sector and being the finance chair for the city of Louisville. My Ohio Fly District Audit Committee member and finance chair for the regional council of governments. I have a lot of experience in all of these types of areas. So I'm very well prepared to hit the ground running day one. Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you. Just for the attendees, if you have questions as we go, you can also type them in the chat and then I'll try to get to some of them before we're out of time. And so the chat messages, I believe, only go to myself and Charlie, who is helping host. Ashley, we're going to have you answer this question first. Understand that the county has a focus on racial equity. Maybe talk about what that looks like in practice for you.
Yeah, so it's every single decision that you make as an elected official impacts people. And from small decisions to large decisions, there are biases that have been built in over time in our country. And so you really have to examine each decision that you're making. If you truly want to make a difference in areas of equity and justice. So for example, in Louisville, we had just a license plate reader system come before us a few weeks ago. And if you think about that, like, you know, many members of council have had the privilege of not having to worry about their license plate information collected. But if you had complicated immigration status, that could really be problematic. And particularly if being criminal justice history, like there have been major biases for pulling people over and investigating people. So something as simple as a license plate camera might not impact one part of the community, but it would have really stigmatizing effects on it. Eat literally every single decision that gets made. You have to think about how it affects different people. And so whether it's budget adoption. Or policymaking or managing the organization, you have to think about equity, diversity, and inclusion. In Louisville, we had a task force come out and tell us about their experiences. And it's eye-opening when you have had position, when you've had experiences that are privileged to hear what's still going on. And from hiring, like hiring practices at the county have changed over time, but we still don't have good representation. So there's work to be done. There are also, you know, celebratory things that people do to ensure that we're being more inclusive outwardly. So you'll see more holiday celebrated, more explicit language being used to describe events. So everybody knows that you're welcome. Everyone is welcome. And so those types of things are joyful and wonderful, but it is a constant fight.
Thank you for that answer, Ashley. Elena?
Thanks, Bruce. I agree with a lot of that. And I would just say it's about not only factoring it into decisions, but actively playing a role. Playing a role to dismantle systems of injustice. We, we have to do more to actually acknowledge where the injustice is, where the disparities are. And then actively seek them out and change that. And so I think it's one thing to say we're going to take it into account in every decision. That's what should have been happening this entire time that we've been serving. And I think what, you know, one piece of one thing that I did at the Boulder District Attorney's Office was to bring in a partnership with the Vera Institute of Justice. So that we could have an outside entity analyze our racial and ethnic disparity data. So that we could actually incredibly detailed target it, improve it, and create policies that directly dismantle those systems. We want to make sure we are acknowledging it and we are working directly on it. And it is so many different layered pieces of county management, including all of the different systems that intersect. So when we look at suicidality data. And the over-representation of people of color of LGBTQ plus individuals. We need to think not just about how our decisions are impacting, but how we can prevent and provide those resources upfront so that we're not losing members of our community. The other thing I would say is that we should be electing people of color. And if we don't have somebody running, we should be trying to find them and supporting them. And if we don't have that, then I'm really proud to be an ally and a disruptor. It's been my entire career. And it's what I will continue to do. And so I'm really grateful to be here and for the question and to continue the fight.
Thank you. Elena, you will answer this question first. In addition to focusing on race, what else is the county doing or can the county do to increase inclusivity and safety for other underserved groups such as LGBTQ plus people?
Well, we've got our own work to do within the county still to support the over 2,000 employees. And that's a piece that I would just start with is around attracting, retaining, recruiting. I oversee our workplace wellness committee and I was the representative for the state on a task force of how to make sure that we are living and practicing what we are preaching. And so that's one piece. I'd say affordability is a huge part of that in our community because the public servants who are serving you cannot afford to live in this community. And so if they cannot serve you in the community that they also live in, they are not as, they're not engaging in our community after work hours. And they are commuting, adding to our emissions. And so those are two pieces. I'd say the community and government also need to work better together. And that means that the county cannot only be in a consultation, consultative role. It's active inclusion. So making sure that we have representation and invitations. To folks that are deciding the policies so that we are listening and we are learning. And compensating people for their time and thinking about when those meetings happen. Is it happening at a time that people who are working and have children can make those meetings? Or are we creating more exclusive policies? It also means owning up to our past. And Boulder County has a very rich history of exclusion that was designed by its policy and continues. And so I, I realize right now we do not start with land acknowledgement, which I know that we're all. We've all done in prior meetings and really mean not as something that is. Something that we need to take to heart and part of all of this as well. And I didn't mean to call you out. I just was realizing that we didn't do it. And so I would just say that we're continuing to learn, to get better. And it's about education and activism and active disruption.
Thank you for that answer and feel free to call us out anytime that we make a mistake and that wasn't oversight. And so I think it's great that you acknowledged it. And that oversight was mine. And so I do apologize. Ashley?
Bruce, could you repeat the question, please?
Of course. In addition to focusing on race, what else is the county doing or can the county do to increase inclusivity and safety for other underserved groups such as LGBTQ plus people?
Thank you very much, Bruce. I really appreciate the question. So I grew up in Colorado in a rural area. And I'm a Jewish woman and I have firsthand experienced hate and bigotry. And you know, you can't tell necessarily from looking at me what my cultural identity is. But I have had experiences where when people find out the, just, you know, my culture causes them to hate me. And so I have personal experience with direct hate and that has impacted how I view inclusion in my life and in my work. And when we were listening to the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Board in Louisville, I heard a father talk about exactly the kind of hate I experienced as a kid. It was adults that were telling other children to hate me because of my cultural background. And as a, as a child, they experienced that. It's really terrible. But to hear that children are still experiencing that and experiencing that in our county. Is, is really devastating. So we need to do more to explicitly show everyone who's inclusive, everyone who wants to let everyone in. Needs to show outwardly that they're including people. And so in Louisville, what we've done to lead in this area is to try and have more actual exhibits that show everyone's welcome. So you'll see flags flown for various holidays of all different types of backgrounds and cultures and groups to show that everyone is welcome. And we want to celebrate all these different cultures and backgrounds. And what we've seen through that is people coming out of the woodwork to express displeasure and hate. And so we all need to stand together and fight back against that and continue to do that. And it's not targeted at one group. People are hateful toward many, many groups. And so we all need to stand together and support one another. And the county really has an opportunity in this area to lead through more explicit shows of inclusion and making it clear that actually everyone's welcome here. This goes from the gamut to celebrations like I've described and displays, but also through our programs and housing and human services, mental health support. Through our direct food assistance, through the different programs that the county puts on, we need to make sure that it's obvious that they're accessible and welcome to everyone. There are people who don't feel comfortable going into a government building to get services. And so providing services where people are as important. This could be through a community center. People are comfortable going to. This could be through religious organization. People are comfortable going to. Other people won't feel comfortable going to a religious institution. So it's really important to have services set up for people in a way that they feel that they can receive the services and support that the county is providing. And this is an area where the United States is under attack right now from within. It's a virus from within of hate. And we all have to fight to break it and ensure that people know who is standing up against hate. And that we're here to support one another because what's happening is people are becoming more afraid and less likely to speak out. And so we do need to support one another through this. And the county, Boulder County in Colorado truly does have an opportunity to play a leadership role in this area and show the nation like we are supporting one another. And when the hate does come, we're just gonna, you know, push it, push it back. We're not allowing that here.
Thank you for that. Thank you both for thoughtful answers to that question. Ashley, what are your priorities for increasing our resiliency and ability to respond to disasters like wildfires and floods? Oh, I think Ashley is muted. Let's see.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Could you repeat the question? I got.
I apologize. And it was inevitable that we would have a Zoom issue of some sort. And so if that's as bad as it gets, I'm feeling pretty good about it. What are your priorities for increasing our resiliency and ability to respond to disasters like wildfires and floods?
Thank you very much. This is, this is absolutely critical that we take action in this area. So we have to address our dispatch system in unincorporated areas of the county. We have to ensure that residents receive notification. It's 2022. It will be 2023 when one of us gets elected and we need to make sure people don't have to sign up for notifications. If you can get an Amber Alert, you can get a reverse 911 notification based on your area. We need to address this urgently because people will continue to get new phones or come and go. So we have to be able to communicate. And our government organizations need to be more coordinated, working together. So this isn't just the school system and the cities. This is the county, the city, the school system, Cedar, Burlington, Northern Santa Fe, the airports. Because when the time strikes, everyone has to be working together. And what one area does has a significant impact on another area. So we need to ensure that our coordination is better. We need to shore up our mutual aid agreements and ensure that we understand what it means when people are denied mutual aid and how we're going to backfill that. And then we really need to take preventative action. So this is about ensuring that our wildland urban interface is addressed. Making sure that we have plans. In the west part of the county, we've been preparing really well. We've been working on mitigation. We continue to have emergency access points. We train our community members about things that they need to be ready for. In the east part of the county, we've got a lot of work to do. So where we have our major population centers, we have a lot of work to do. And we need to make sure that neighbors helping neighbors and good fortune are not the reasons why our death count is low. We need to have really good plans in place. And be able to execute them. And then just the last piece I'll say is that there's a lot of contracting that needs to be done on the administrative side in advance of the next emergency. And the really important and critical thing about that is that if you have, if you've done your procurement process ahead of an emergency. You don't have to start all of that paperwork after. And there's really important reasons why that process is deliberate. But it takes time. And if you don't start that until after the emergency, you're adding time to recovery. You're adding potential litigation to recovery. And so there are just a lot of failure points that if you, if we negotiate these contracts in advance of the next emergency, will be much better served and be able to recover more quickly.
Thank you.
I, I think there's a lot of layers to this. And one layer is people having trust in their government ahead of disasters. So that's meaning that they feel that their leaders are transparent. And accountable. And good under pressure and not, not political when it comes to times of need. And so every community, every city has an emergency manager. Those are people that need to be elected or picked or chosen because they're able to work well with others under pressure. I saw firsthand some of the challenges of drawing the pentagons on the OEM maps. Around challenges with municipal lines. And as we saw with the Marshall Fire, the fire went over multiple city lines into county land, back into county land. And we have to be able to keep those kind of egos out of those brings. So there's one piece about when the decision gets made to do things like evacuate. There's another piece about how that message goes out. And that is definitely somewhere that we need to have improvement. We should also have more messages from OEM. So I don't know how many of you are like me, where you're checking Mitchell Byers Twitter feed. You're refreshing the, the OEM webpage every few seconds. And I was doing that while at OEM. And so if nothing else, let's send a message that says we have no update for this next 30 minutes. We will get you an update in 30 minutes, whether we have one or not. So a lot of it is administrative, but it's also collaborative. We have to work together. And the pace that I also think is that this is also tied to housing. No, we can't rely on neighbors and communities to make sure our death counts are low. And also research shows that when we do have neighborhood coffee shops in connected communities. That it actually does decrease death rates and that social infrastructure is worth investing in. And so that's a place also that I would say investing in housing. And mobility and options and making sure that folks are getting the services both preventatively. And post-disaster, whether you live in a apartment, a million dollar home, or in a manufactured trailer home. That you are on the county's radar and on your city's radars, because people deserve to have, have equal access to all of us.
Awesome. Thank you for that answer. Elena, you will answer this question first. And this comes from a community member, Raleigh Mancuso. Do you think it should be a crime to sleep in a vehicle in unincorporated Boulder County?
We don't. I think that we need to work on what it is that we're trying to address with that. So we have concern about more forest fires and from, for lack of a better word, people camping. Where we are in a really concerning time of ongoing fire danger. I think I was called to worked on four fires in one day, not too long ago. And so I think things that might help are to have designated safe areas to park. This is another place where I see in terms of domestic violence and people escaping areas of violence, needing to have places to go. And so I am not wanting to criminalize the unhoused. I am sometimes in my world and in my work, really grateful to hear that somebody has a car to sleep in so that they are not out in the elements where we have lost far too many lives. And so there's work to be done on that policy, but in general, I will not support further criminalization of our unhoused population.
Thank you. Ashley?
Thank you. No, I'm not supportive of penalizing people that are sleeping in their cars. I mean, I think that's the whole.
Thank you. No, I'm not supportive of uh penalizing people that are sleeping in their cars. I, I mean, I think that's the whole answer. Uh, but I will just add, I also think it's unacceptable that we have failed to provide services to people that their only option is to sleep in their car. And we really are failing people right now. You can see it um walking around in the community. So we need to do better.
Thank you for that. Um, thank you both for those answers. Um, actually, um. What will you do to help immigrants in Boulder County?
Yeah, so um even as mayor, um, there are things that happen all the time to help immigrants. Um, for example, uh. Community member from Venezuela was working on their citizenship, um, and unfortunately uh got a bad. Um, officer helping their 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 process. And luckily, they felt comfortable contacting me and I was able to. Help them get a congressional inquiry into their um case and um boom, within twenty-four hours, it was cleared up and their citizenship was moved along. And I'm I'm actually going to the party to celebrate on the twentieth, so that'll be fantastic. But what's really not fantastic is that people um can't just rely on the normal system, that they have to call an elected official to get help. And so we need to escalate these issues to our congressional partners, and they are very good partners that we have right now. And they are very responsive and make sure they understand that um our processes have to serve everyone and be fair. Right now, um, the system that's set up for immigrants is not fair. The federal government needs to make changes. And so when we have our meetings with our delegation, reminding them about the importance. Of some of these bigger, broader issues is really important because county commissioners, mayors, city council members, that is who meets with people day to day and hears about problems. Um, you know, when you hear about a problem, it's not okay to to say it's too big of a problem. Um, for example, at the disaster assistance center after the fire. Um, disaster assistance staff um alerted Mayor Folsom and myself to the fact that they were turning immigrants away because they were nervous that their information would be given to ICE. And they had um complicated immigration status. And so um when you hear something like that, you know, some elected officials or staff members just are overwhelmed by. The daunting scope of the task, but Mayor Folsom and I escalated the issue. Um, to our contacts at the White House and actually got policy changed so that people would stop being turned away. And that the um previous administration's bad policy that was being used by homeland security would be amended. And so I think when you hear about injustice, you really do have to follow up and work on it. Everything won't be fixed by a county commissioner. Don't get me wrong. Like, we need federal change. We need to elect really good federal representatives. And we need to help um our friends in other states elect really good federal representatives also. But we have to be supportive on the parts of the program that we work on. We also have to provide our services in ways that are accessible to all community members. Um, so a lot of people are really uh focused in on providing uh Spanish translation services. Well, when you are working in the community, you'll find out quickly. There's a lot of other languages than just English and Spanish. We have people that need information in whatever language they are familiar with. And so in our mobile home park, for example, there are people who speak. A variety of languages and can't talk to their neighbors. Um, there are people who have come from lots of different countries. Um, and so making sure you can find. Uh, translation services for whatever. Speech you need to communicate in is really important and not assume that just because you're providing something in English and Spanish. That all of our community members will be able to understand it. Um, so it it it's. It's complex. It's sometimes hard to find a cultural liaison depending on um, you know, how big of a population or how big of a safety net someone has. To know that they need translation services in a different language, but it's really important that our elected officials seek out. Um, people who need additional help and services and provide it.
Thank you. Um, Elena?
Um, Bruce, I'm gonna try to keep my answers a little shorter because I see that we are even at clock and I'd love to take a lot of. Questions today. These are great questions. Uh, I I have worked directly to help immigrants in our community. I started as a public defender where I saw firsthand. What was happening when you were convicted or even faced with a low level offense that are undocumented. And or hoping to adjust status in the future. So anyone who's non-citizen. Um, even things like traffic tickets can have major implications. We don't need to elevate everything to Joe Negoosa's office. There are things we can do locally and we have. So as a county, we expanded together, a number of us, and said. We are going to take steps that the sheriff's office and district attorney's office, law enforcement. And any county employee will not report to ICE without a subpoena. That was a step that we led the country in and is homegrown and we will continue. I also think it's about not waiting for people to contact us, but to be engaged with the immigrant community directly. And so that's advocates, it's education, it's being appro- uh available and approachable. And it's thinking through not just can use language lines for all languages, but things like our evac notices for the fire. Were not translated in Spanish. And so there are definitely more very achievable steps we can do to make sure that we are supporting our immigrants. I would love to see more people engaged and involved in politics and know that they have a welcome space here regardless of whether or not. Federally they are recognized with the right to vote. And it's something that I think we should do locally to think about how we can have people have a voice in some of the processes that are most important. Um, in in weighing in on these issues. So thank you. This is a passion area for me and it will continue to be one that I work on.
Awesome. Um, thank you both. Um, in the spirit of Elena's observation, maybe we can aspire to limit our answers to around one minute. Um, not with an enforced time, um, but sort of if we can shoot for that, it will help us get through a little bit more information. Um, Garrison has sent me a question in the chat that I think is a good one and addresses a topic we haven't talked about yet. And so uh Elena, I think you will take this question first, and it is, what will you do to hold RTD accountable towards increased transportation access in Boulder County?
I think that's a really challenging issue that we need to address. And I've had meetings with multiple people on the RTD board and working on this issue. We haven't seen movement from the people working on the issue over the last few years. Um, so I hope some new leadership and some new recognition of the fact that we need to increase ridership, which means we need to increase availability and access. And stop decreasing. Those are first in line for me as well.
Awesome. Ashley?
Thank you. I think our partnership is very strong with our um elected officials that are from our district, but right now, the rest of the district sees Boulder County. Um, elected officials frankly is racist. The county staff have pushed for a number of things that have basically taken services from areas that are disproportionately. Uh, served in the Denver metro region and taken them from Boulder County. And it has uh made us look. And made some actions uh come across as really bad. And we have some work to do to repair what has been done. Um, because you know, it, you can look at the demographic statistics and you can look at where we have taken funds from for our county. And um it's not right. So we have a lot of work to do um. To reform some of those relationships in other areas of the district that have been injured by some of the actions in the last couple of years. Um, and we need to own up to what we've done. Um, I think that will go a long way, but the biggest issue right now for RTD is a driver shortage. They cannot hire drivers. So even when we are able to get funds to restore critical routes like the FF four and FF two and LX. Um, we can't restore them because there is no one to drive the vehicles. And so we need to help. Come up with how we can all work together on these driver shortage issues because it's not a RTD driver shortage. It's a school district driver shortage. It's a city. Low driver shortage. It's a county driver shortage. It's a DIA driver shortage. Um, and so we have to figure out how we can provide systems. Um, that can facilitate drivers for maybe multiple purposes, maybe a school district and. RTD, we have to rethink some of those things and we have to leverage technological solutions. Um, so really supporting RTD and pilot programs like they've done at School of Mines with the driverless vans. Um, really supporting advancing that technology because we are in a position where our population is aging. We used to have one in ten residents that was a senior citizen. We're moving toward one in four. As we have more um retired folks, you know, you have fewer employed employees working in the working population. So this is a big problem that's going to get worse over time. And we have to use technology and our relationships to solve the problem. And so we will have to work. Um, with the rest of the region to make sure that we're not just serving the Boulder County disproportionately impacted populations, but really thinking regionally. Because people who work in Boulder County, they might live in Denver. You might live in. In Lafayette or Lewisville or Erie, and you might have one person in the family that works in Boulder, one might work in Denver. You might have a three family household, one might work in Fort Collins. So we really have to think about transportation much more regionally and work together.
Um, thank you. This question is from Alice. Um, and Elena, no, Ashley, you will answer first. Um, the current market is pricing everyone out of affordable housing. Um, what can the city and or county of Boulder do to help increase the stock of affordable homes?
Back uh in twenty nineteen, all of us agreed on a regional housing plan, and it is a very good plan. And the issue is we have not acted on the plan. Um, is it a silver bullet that will make it so everyone can afford housing tomorrow? No, but we do have to start executing our regional housing strategy. It has a target of twelve percent permanently affordable housing. And it has the county taking the leadership role um from the housing authority perspective. So we really have to execute that. And part of that comes with talking about funding and budget. And making sure that we're funding our priorities.
Thank you, Elena. I believe you're muted, Elena. I'm going to un- ask you to unmute now.
Okay, thanks for that. I think we can do better than twelve percent permanently affordable. We need to be able to say yes to some changes in a way that we've excluded purposely housing in the past. That means that we need to ask the hard questions. And we need to think about density and development that both is green building. But also helps to decrease our sixty thousand in commuters every day. We need to make sure that families that live in the Marshall Fire burn area can rebuild and stay here. We need to watch for numbers. And God, Ashley brought up the number of folks who are aging in our community. I'm also watching the decrease of the number of families that are enrolling in elementary school because people cannot afford to live here. So thinking broader about housing strategy, that means accessory dwellings on agricultural land so that folks can age in place there and people can work the land. It means thinking about how many folks can live in a given home and really taking the work at our building codes so that we are not building an exclusive white. And aging population um that we've been known to do in the past. And so it's all of that. It's being not afraid to say no, but also not afraid to say yes to changes.
So Elena, this this question will go to you first. And um Karen Rayford submitted um a few questions related to this. And so I'm gonna try to wrap them into one and and sort of give you a chance to address it. Um, across the country, there is a sort of a rash of attacks about including critical race theory or really education about race in K through twelve schools. And about including LGBTQ topics in K through twelve schools. And this is sort of came home to Colorado recently with the state board of education. Considering not following the law and not enforcing sort of the standards um for teaching LGBTQ issues. In lower grades. And so what do you see um? That you can do about that as county commissioner? Um, and how will you sort of support um teaching about those issues in our schools?
Yeah, thanks Bruce. So I I recently stepped off the board of. Directors for the YWCA Boulder County. And the YWCA's mission is eliminating racism and empowering women. And one of the programs that they have is the reading to end racism program where they are reading books and having discussions with. Students in Boulder Valley School District. I've worked closely with both school districts on school to prison pipeline issues and have launched a co-chair. A minority over representation or racial ethnic disparity group specifically looking at issues of juveniles. Um, in all of our systems. I know of bullying and I know that it's rampant in many of our schools and we are trying and schools are trying to address it. And need more tools. We cannot undermine tools of education. So I will support that. It's a dinner time conversation for my family. We read books, we talk about it. And we talk about it openly with friends. And so I will support education. I will support partnering with all of you community partners to make sure that our kids are getting education and that we are not excluding. Trans youth or kids of color and um have access to those supportive educational tools as well.
Ashley?
Thank you. I think being a really good ally to the school districts is critical here and making sure that the school boards feel the support from the county elected officials. That's a key point. Another key point is again through budgetary policy decisions, we have to make sure the funds are going to before and after school programming. That really um is inclusive. And um every nonprofit organization or religious organization is not equal and they are not all inclusive. And so making sure that we fund things that are inclusive, that are supportive, that um are outwardly. Explaining and explicit that they are going to use funds in a certain way. And um if you look at what we've done with our nonprofit programs in Louisville, we've included some statements that people are required to. Adhere to to be able to receive funds. Um, I think that that's critical. I think it's also critical that you make sure when there are issues that we talk about them. Um, and expose them and and correct it. So not letting um ongoing. Um, hate lie and just continuing things because it's easy to ignore it and push it aside. You have to actually talk about it and expose the root of the issue.
Um, thank you both for that. I'm, I'm going to try to squeeze in two more questions in four minutes and and um there's some big stuff. And so um I apologize for asking you to speak briefly about such important topics. Uh, we have a question that came in from Ann Noonan. Um. And it's sort of related to the mental health ARPA committee recommendations. Um, how would you leverage the new dollars? Uh, with services already in place to make the best use of those funds to support mental health services in Boulder County?
This is.
And this question, I apologize. The question goes to Ashley first.
Thank you. So I think it's critical when we're looking at these ARPA dollars that we fund the programs that have been cut and are underfunded. And so with mental health services, we've made a lot of promises to our community. About how we're going to address mental health and how we're going to take on alternative sentencing and how we're going to address some of these things. So people are not. Being sent to prison when they could really have treatment and be right back in the community with their families and friends. Um, and so I think we need to. To basically fund the programs that we've established rather than establishing new programs. So making sure that we adequately. Provide the services that we've already committed to serve.
Thank you, Elena.
Well, Bruce, uh, we have a lot of gaps in the county that we've identified. I've been working on this for eight years and we continue to have gaps. And so it is both listening to the partners already in the units doing the work who are underfunded. And also creating and implementing and innovating. We are forty ninth as a state in mental health funding. We are seeing incredible numbers of our youth struggling. We know there's an overrepresentation of those struggling who are LGBTQ plus or kids of color. And so it's not just, it's targeting those needs and expanding. And not trying the same thing over and over again. Um, and one last piece on inclusivity and cultural responsiveness. We need providers who are vetted. Providers who know how to work with people who are um experiencing systemic racism. Or who are wanting to talk about LGBTQ plus questions. Um, and so we need to make sure that we have providers who can do it all. Or excuse me, don't do it all, but can do some things really well.
Um, thank you for that answer. Um, we, um, Elena, you you will answer this question first. Um. Gabrielle, who I hope I am pronouncing that name correctly, um, asked, what is your position on oil and gas development in Boulder County? As a county commissioner, how would you protect residents from the impacts of drilling and climate change?
I will support everything we can to get away from fossil fuels. I will uphold regulations. I will use my experience as an attorney and an advocate. To continue the fight for Boulder County. And a lot of this needs to be regional. And so we've talked about regional issues. I am collaborative. I am known to both play well with others and achieve really innovative success. And so that means being tough while also bringing others to the table. So monitoring our air quality, uh, working to uh fight and keep sun core accountable. And also you should know that that my family is committed to this. Uh, we have no conflicts of interest. We have no bias other than to protect the government, excuse me. Protect the environment and work hard to achieve as much as we can to um decrease carbon use and and, excuse me. Oil and gas use.
Um, thank you, Elena. Ashley?
Yeah, I mean, climate change is here and our community just lost about ten percent of the housing. There are everyday little children have asthma. There are huge risks to all of our community members. We just, we cannot continue to extract fossil fuels from the earth. We cannot continue on the path that we're on. The state laws changed. Um, county commissioner is a critical role in applying uh the new law to ensure maximum health and safety is um guaranteed to our residents. And right now, we're not doing that. We not only have to really take a health and safety perspective. And right now we're not doing that. We not only have to really take a health and safety perspective for our residents on any new applications. Um, and you can look at my, uh, my history as a mayor and an elected official, and I will stand up for community members, um, every single time. Um, so we need to make sure things are as safe as possible, which means a lot of times you have to say no to things. Um, that are unacceptable and we need to proactively cap wells. We have to stop leaving, um, orphaned wells and flow lines and other things, um, in the field. So this is not just about, um, you know, seeing what we can do with the law. Like we have to proactively elect people that are going to protect the community. And, uh, in Louisville, we passed regulation, um, that has prevented oil and gas drilling completely. So. Um, we, we need to do better for our community members. The levels of toxins in the air in our area is severe. Um, it is not safe. Our air quality is not good and oil and gas is a significant contributor to those issues.
Um, thank you both for the answer. Um, we are running out of time, so we're going to transition to closing statements now. Um, as I explained at the beginning, um, everyone has three minutes to do opening and closing statements. And so, um, Ashley went first on the opening segment, so Elena will go first on closing. Elena?
Thank you. Um, Boulder County is an incredibly beautiful place to live. But when we pull back the veil, we know that we have a lot of work to do in intersectional areas. That work predated the Marshall fire. It will postdate the recovery. And equity must be centered in all we do. In climate action, in climate justice, in public safety, mental health, housing, disaster preparedness. In community resilience and recovery. We need to get out of rhetoric and I will be your loud and proud ally. I'm a disruptor of systems of inequity. It's not new to me. It's who I've been. It's part of my upbringing, my family values, my education, my career and my community volunteerism. And it's how I'm raising my children. I will always show up for equity, not only on the campaign trail or in times of celebration or acute outrage. I will do everything I can to protect abortion access rights of every human with a uterus. Boulder County will remain a safe place for healthcare access and I will advocate at the local, state and federal levels. I'm an attorney. I will use my privilege and my voice for change. I will lift others' voices. And I have a proven success in driving systemic change. I ask hard questions. I force issues and I find creative and innovative solutions. I invite those most impacted to the table. I listen, I learn and I'm collaborative. So that those who are most impacted aren't left in the wake. Of well-meaning government that hasn't done its equity homework. I'd say very few politicians can say they are respected by the teams that they lead. By their colleagues, by the community members that they are working for. And those across aisles, the courtrooms or issues or parties. I lead like I parent with empathy, kindness and grit. I'm not a career politician. I'm a public servant and an advocate for change. And I'd be honored to continue to serve this county as your next county commissioner. As we emerge from COVID and disasters and face our next and continued challenges, we are stronger together. I'll lead in a way that makes others want to join so that we can achieve great things as a partner with agencies like Out Boulder County. As a coalition builder. Please join me now at Elena for Boulder County dot com. Together we've got this.
Thank you, Elena. Ashley?
Thanks Bruce. I really appreciate everyone coming today and participating in the forum. Um, I'm Ashley Stolzmann. I have been working on taking climate action, um, since I got elected in twenty thirteen in the city of Louisville. We have been working hard to make life better for all of the residents in East County. Um, we've been working on housing. We've been working on transportation. And unfortunately, we haven't done enough in climate as a world, as a globe, and we need to take action now. And I'm a proven leader that is solutions driven where we can see effects of what we've done, where people can actually live. And enjoy their life better because of the work as a public servant. And so I would be honored to be able to do that at the county level and to be able to take my experience. From this tragedy in the Marshall fire and put it to good use to ensure that we recover as quickly as we can. Here in East County, but also are more resilient into the future. We, we really need to work on our emergency dispatch services. We really need to work on our intergovernmental coordination on emergency response and resilience. Um, it's been said to me by the Office of Emergency Management that no one runs a campaign on disaster preparedness and recovery. Um, because you know, it's not something people like to think about, but it's just something we have to do now. We have to be more prepared. We have been seeing floods and fires in our county at a rate that is totally unacceptable. And we need to address it for our community members, for their health and safety and for the community. So that we can be resilient into the future and people can have peaceful enjoyment at their home and family. Um, there are so many issues from transportation to housing to homelessness to climate that we need to be working on. And we need prepared, experienced leaders that can hit the ground running on day one. And I am that person. I would love to talk to anyone who would love to connect. Um, you can find my website at Stolzmann for Boulder County dot com. And I hope I can count on your support.
Um, listen, thank you both so much on behalf of myself, Marty Moore and the entire Out Boulder County team as well as the community for the service that you already do. And for putting yourselves out there to, um, do even more for the community. Um. Thank you to all of the attendees for offering up questions and, um, go vote, folks. It's important. Um, thank you, everybody.
Thanks Bruce.
Thank you both very much.
Great to see everybody.